Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. All other clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Fulton?
Here.
Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Clerk Chouffu?
Here.
Trustee Colain?
Here.
Trustee Germain?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Absent.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Trustee Harper did call me this afternoon and was stated he would be unavailable for tonight's meeting. Number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Forward.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Petrucci. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay, motion carries. Call of the public, anybody that called the public. Good evening.
My name is Heidi Meisterfeld and I live in the Heritage of, across the street, Heritage Meadows. I wrote down my words. Ever since the July notification about the impending gas station was sent out, I've been coming to almost every planning meeting and even attended a few trustee meetings to voice my concerns. I'm here tonight to ask you to consider your answer to the proposal very carefully. At each of the planning meetings I attended, the committee would abate items, meaning ignore the township ordinances in order to pass the proposal to build the gas station. They ignored the gas, the noise ordinance pertaining to the drive-through. Noise will be created by cars and the people yelling into their speaker at 3:00 a.m. Mug and Bobs informed the planning committee that a substantial amount of their business is done at night using the drive-through. Mug and Bobs had to submit a noise decibel test. Before the noise test was done, the field that separates Heritage Meadows from M-59 was cleared of all the tall grasses and some of the scrubbing trees. By cutting down the scrub, by cutting the scrub down and taking a sound reading, it made our subdivision appear louder than it was before the field was cleared. Now, with a noisy gas station moving in, it would, it would only appear that the noise levels go up a smaller amount. I have lived here for only two years and it's never been this loud. I spoke with my neighbors who are the original homeowners and they said that, that it has never been this loud. Now we can see and hear M-59. The planning committee also ignored the light ordinances by exceeding the recommended limit. These bright lights will fill the night sky 24 hours a day. Homeowners will have to keep their curtains closed at night so they can sleep. I was told that the lights will be brighter than that that's found at the KFC, which are so bright that it lights up the entire bedrooms that face the KFC property. KFC meets Heartland standards. The berm is required, but it is ignored. Twelve-foot tall trees, evergreen trees are required, but they're ignored. The owner of Mug and Bobs complained saying that they were too much money. When Mug and Bobs were asked about the fuel or oil runoff into the wetlands, they replied that they are already polluted. Homeowners showed concern for flooding because a section of the wetlands will be filled in. This too was ignored. Mug and Bobs showed concern about the smell coming off the pump station on the corner, but ignored the question when asked about the smell that they would be emitting. Ornament 78 title blight and nuisance might as well not exist. There are seven, excuse me, there are five sections that are clearly state why the gas station should not be permitted. But this is being ignored too. Why have ordinances if they can just be abated? Why have stop signs if no one has to follow them? Why have speed limits if they can be ignored? There is a dead deer out in front of the Centennial House. I'm sure it wished that the driver that hit him had slowed down, thought about his actions just for a minute. Laws are put in place not just to be followed, but to safeguard others. How many days a week do you drive Clark Road? This meeting began at 7:00 p.m. and will end in the next hour. Rush hour is over with. Try this drive at 5:00 p.m. You are putting your car's health at risk along with your heart. I was told that an M-, I was told that MDOT would be redoing the impact study after the gas station has been built. I have read the current impact study and it is laughable to suggest that the gas station will create only a few-second delay on Clark Road. Each of you drive this route, you know that the wait is more than a few seconds. How can the business propose a 40% increase in traffic at this intersection while stating that the increase of wait time will only be a few seconds? How can anyone say that during peak hours, your entire wait will be 15 seconds? I personally wait five minutes at a time during rush hour. A resident told me that they saw the impact study being done on Clark Road. They said that a device that looks like a rubber hose was laid across Clark Road and it counted each car as they drove over it. That is strange, this is the strange part. This hose was placed between Matthew Lane and Rovi. That means all the cars turning off Rovi onto Clark Road heading south towards M-59 were not counted. And all the cars, all the cars driving on Clark from M-59 that turned westbound onto Rovi were also not counted in this impact study. In the two years that I've been driving on Clark Road, there is always someone turning onto Rovi or off Rovi onto Clark Road. Having MDOT do another impact study after the gas station has been built is pointless. That is like saying you will close the barn door after the horses have gotten out. This needs to be addressed before this proposal is passed. Accidents happen there on almost a daily basis. About two weeks ago, there were three different accidents by this corner. Not three cars in one accident, but three different ones at the same time that spanned about two blocks. You have told me that you understand our concerns and yet this process keeps moving forward. People tell me that they are disillusioned by all this. They keep asking me how all of this can keep happening. How can the township ignore their own ordinances? I agree with them. I find it interesting that Mug and Bobs complain about something and the problem is magically fixed. I have over 80 homeowner signatures that state that they have a problem with all of this, but yet all of it gets ignored. Isn't your elected job to uphold the ordinances and to protect your citizens? You protected your citizens by stopping the Menards from coming in. Will you put a stop to this tonight or will you just stand back, wait, and wring your hands and say, "How did this happen?"
Thank you. Anybody else this evening that called the public? Being none, move on to our first, actually item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Colaini, second by Trustee Germain. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Item number seven, A is site plan number 533, Mug and Bobs. Good evening.
Good evening.
Includes two special land uses. Manager Wickman has the site plan up on the big screen here this evening for us. There's a recommendation by the Planning Commission and that being said, Trustee Colaini, I have asked him to review the Planning Commission application and offer his comments.
This is application number 533, site plan, there are two special land uses for the Mug and Bobs gas station and drive-through at M-59 and Clark Road. This matter has come before the Planning Commission on three, three times, July 16th, 2015, October 8th, and November 5th. There's been extensive discussion with the applicant, trying to meet many of the concerns of the residential property to the north. This is commercial property located on M-59. A number of things that I think between some of the period of time between the first time mugs and bobs came through and the last time they, there was an attempt, I believe, to reach out and address some of those issues and maybe the applicant can kind of talk a little bit more about that. At the last Planning Commission meeting, there was considerable amount of time talking about the screening and landscaping plan. I believe there, the applicant can kind of go through this, but there's, there's going to be planted to the north edge of the property, a significant number of evergreen trees in screening. I've also been informed that it added a number of other bushes or shrubs in place of where we thought it wouldn't make most sense before our, as you know, Sue Grissom is a landscape architect that serves on our Planning Commission and does a real nice job of analyzing the landscaping plan that's before, with, with the applicants. Basically, we're here today to approve the two special land uses and the site plan in order for the applicant to move forward. I will tell you, the last time it was up, we went through every issue that the Planning Commission, or excuse me, Dave Campbell, our Planning, Planning Director, had listed on his review letter. We went through it very carefully on each line item and the applicant responded accordingly. The latest issue, I think, has to do with the location of the speaker and I guess my understanding that's being redirected in a different, in light of the study that was done. Am I correct on that?
I think that it's okay to talk.
Yeah, I want you to go ahead.
I think that that, I might have had the interview. Thank you for letting us come before you today. I think that at the previous one, we had worked it out. I think that the last one, the biggest issue had to do with where the berm, excuse me, where the, yeah, where the, where the traffic would flow around the edge of the drive-through was located so that the headlights wouldn't flash in the, towards the buildings. So it's on that top right corner, three more evergreens are added around that, right, three more around that corner to the left, so that that would block any headlights as people are coming around the corner there to the drive-through. The other thing that happened if you, if you lower it. So in, in response to the comments and questions that we've had from the neighbors, we've, we've done two or three different things to, to address it. Originally, we had offered a wall and that's what was in the standard from the township. It was discussed back and forth, we came back and the township requirement for trees is two rows, were, and the residents' request, pardon?
The residents?
Yeah, the residents didn't want a wall also. They said, "No, we don't, we don't want a wall." So we, we went back and we added a third tree line. So the standard is two trees, two rows of trees, and we added a third tree line. The other, the other thing that we have done is, is that in listening to what the township residents in New York and Heritage Meadows had said, they wanted to have it.
Do you need a pointer?
He's a lady.
Thank you. They wanted to have it be a little less industrial and a little bit more.
Sit the top. Can you use a top button?
Top button, oh. So in this area right here, this is actually a mean wall. So this is a wall across here, down here, there's a wall, but then it also is converted to an area where, if you notice here, this is shrub here. So there's a combination of, of an actual wall, that's about three foot high. So it's a decorative wall that we are putting in there to make the site less industrial. The reason that there are no shrubs and this is a solid wall across here, again, this is 36 inches high, is that the neighbors said, "We don't want to invite somebody to walk in here. We want to have a barrier and feeling like somebody would walk up the back of the door and walk through here and go into the neighborhood." So this is a wall. Across here is a wall and a combination of green shrubs that we, say, outlined in the whole property and will come around the corner. The other thing that happened at the last Planning Commission meeting was they asked us to add three more trees in this section through here so that it will have some more architecture or, or.
Landscape elements, right.
And so the area that we added the trees is right in here, there was worry that when somebody comes through here, their headlights would shine. And so we added three more of the large evergreens here. What else?
My dad's a little bit under the weather today, so he's usually a little bit more outgoing. The trees there in the top that are circles rather than the evergreens we added are existing trees that are there today. We actually met with the neighbors and we had passed state them all.
And rather than. An engineer.
Passed engineer. Rather than clear cutting the property to leave it, so it had more of a natural feel, those trees are existing, they will stay after the fact and it's more of an established forest. If we were to take this same space here and put in the berm as it requested in the ordinance, it would have a negative impact. The berm that was discussed, there was a consensus that it would have a negative impact on the natural existence.
The other thing is, is that if we put that in there, we potentially kill those existing trees. And that was the biggest worry about, you know, not damaging what exists there right now. So, so these are existing trees, they're tagged, we know what they are, and then we're adding two more rows to them. The, the other thing that I can tell you is that, yeah, yeah, I think I'm going to go backwards for just a minute, just go to the beginning and just start to say. So we are a local, a family-run business and we appreciate the opportunity to be here in the township. We actively work in our business and try and listen to what our customers are asking us to provide them. And we believe that this facility that we want to build in Crown Township will do just that. It does have a full-line convenience store and it also has a Dunkin' Donuts and a Baskin Robbins in it. We do not make the donuts here on-site, we produce them at a kitchen that we have and these are handmade and we bring them in and, and sell them here. The station will include a state-of-the-art fuel system. It will, we are going to probably put in fiberglass tanks and the state-of-the-art electronics that are required by the state to go ahead and monitor all the fuel system. The building itself, I think, is going to be something that the township will like. It will be an asset for the community. It exceeds the standards and we worked hard to try and make it something that you, as the township, would be happy to have in the neighborhood. I apologize, I do feel a little bit under the weather in this, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have with me. And I would open it up to you and ask you to have me answer any questions I can.
It's stated that the sign permit would be under a separate application?
That is correct.
Okay. Does that include the signs on the building itself?
All signs.
All the signs?
All signs.
Okay.
And where it works at.
Board members, have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Looking at the, is this where the drive-through is right here?
It is.
What is the dis, go back to here where it was.
Okay.
What's the distance between this and the back of the lot? I, I saw the preliminaries, but I don't know what the final came out.
I, I think that it is.
Two hundred and fifty feet.
Two hundred and, I think from the back of the building, it's 270 feet.
The back of the building to the property line is 329 feet.
Back of the building is about 329 feet. Can you go back there? And then, so from here to back here is probably what, 200 maybe, 225 feet?
Over 200, I think it was over 200.
About 250.
And all of this in here, is this going to be all natural?
As we have.
Is that going to be disturbed when you build?
No, we haven't, we've, we've not done anything to this site. We walked on it, that's all we've done to this site. So that's all left natural.
That's pretty, is it, and that's regulated wetland to the?
All of this here is a regulated wetland, yes. And that's controlled by the DEQ. The only section that we are doing is, is we're crossing it right here at the entrance to M-59.
So that portion will be filled in?
It, it will. We have a permit from the DEQ for that. And it's a, just a very small portion and they told us that because of the runoff of M-59 that comes in here, there are four entrances of waterways that come off the road. They said, "Look, the quality of that is, is minor and what you're talking about is a very minor impact and this is."
The drainage patterns come from the west, southwest towards the north, correct? To east, is that how?
Yes, the road, it flows this way. That's correct.
But I mean, you have flowage coming across from Clark Road, correct?
From over here, from over on the other side. So what happens is this whole area here has several different areas that they drain and right about in here is a line that comes across from this area here. And, and right now, it just is an open line about right there and it just flows across the property. So the neighbor's property floods into ours at a high watermark and goes over here. And what we're proposing to do is, is we are going to put in a large pipe here to accept any water that comes across and then we are going to run it across here and drop it right there so it crosses.
Because you have to accept that.
Correct.
Other questions from board members?
Do you know what the total size of the wetland is?
I do not.
Because it goes beyond the property.
It does. It's, it's quite a large area up across here. And I, I know that it exceeds five acres. And that's what I think makes it a regulated wetland.
The, there's two land use, two approvals, what exactly are they?
One for the gas and the other?
The gas station and then the use of the property.
No.
Drive-through.
Drive-through.
Yep.
This came before us once, before our preliminaries, if you recall.
Yep. Do you know what gasoline you'll be branding here?
I, I do not.
I just don't know if we Speedway.
No, no, it's not, it's not Speedway. Yeah, it's a, it's a corporate, yeah, Speedway's all corporate owned. So, yeah, no.
We do hope you bring some prices that compete with.
Everybody else.
Better than everybody else. A lot of people have said that they're excited to see a gas station on the north side of M-59, you know, versus the only other ones we have are on the south side, so.
It's nice not to have to cross the traffic, get your fuel and be able to go where you're going to go.
And I do drive that every day.
To the applicants, are you aware that the materials that were presented to the Township Board is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve the site plan, application 533, but it comes with about eight conditions?
We are.
Okay, what's the status of those eight?
We were, we were told that for the final permitting from the township, that we would just have to go ahead and supply them with them. If you're referencing the message from the fire department, the engineering department, we don't, we don't have those official items prepared. We were told that for this purpose, those would be administratively applied, the, the standards would be applied and we need supply them to the township.
So, just so I'm clear on the, the progress so far, one of the items is the revised landscape plan. Are we looking at the revised landscape here or is that still in progress?
So this landscape plan was presented and it was added to, so what do you use?
We, we were told, "Do not change a thing." You have to look at the same thing that they approved. I believe that I can find a copy of the landscape plan. Again, the landscape plan that, they have said, "Don't change it," but I can tell you that the only thing that we have added is, is that we've added the three trees here that they asked for. These have been removed and the area from this entrance to this entrance, we added three more trees. And we have designated that all of the shrubs are going to be the 24-inch height instead of 18. So those were the biggest changes.
Upon planting.
Pardon me?
It would be their size upon planting?
Yes.
Okay. The second point is that you're supposed to, there's supposed to be an administrative review by the planning department of a revised site plan that addresses their review letters of October 29th and November 5th. You received both of those letters?
Yes, yes we have.
There's a concern that you demonstrate compliance with all applicable standards for outdoor seating area. Is the current plan not in compliance? Or is it closer?
No, it's, it was acceptable by the, the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Matt, are you referencing page seven of the, from the?
Seven A, yep.
Okay.
Are you going through?
I was just following along with you on that.
You've just mentioned the Township Engineer, Fire Marshal, and DEW Director Review Letters. Know about that one. Preparation of the plan is another one of the items. And this one is kind of all encompassing, compliance with the requirements of all state and county agencies, including but not limited to MDOT, Livingston County Road Commission, MDEQ, State Department of Licensing and Regulation Affairs, State Liquid, Liquor Control Commission. Bill just mentioned the sign permit, which be coming as a separate application.
To which one? The sign. The signs, the signs are totally separate. Since we didn't have the brand, we couldn't include it, but it was our understanding again was to bring it in separately.
And the eighth point is, I think I repeat, but it talks about the outdoor seating again.
So what, what happened to Mr. Germain is, is that the, at one of the last meetings, we were asked to provide access from the sidewalk over to the building. And when we provided that access, it also, the light came on, it made sense for us to go ahead and allow for seating out here with some people. And so at the last meeting, we said to the township, "If you don't want us to have the seating there, we'll remove it." And the Planning Commission said, "No, we understand why you have it there, just make sure that when you submit it, our planning department can give you administrative approval and make sure that you meet all the guidelines." So we gave the Planning Commission the choice on what to do and they said, "Leave it and just make sure that you turn in the proper documents to the planning department."
So, Mr. Supervisor, if we take action tonight, we still have to include all of those points in our?
It's part, it's right in the motion.
It's part, it would be part of the motion itself.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? If there aren't any, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved to approve application number 533, a site plan with two special land uses for mugs and, Mug and Bops gas station at drive-through, at the drive-through, and drive-through, excuse me, on day today, at M-59 and Clark Road, subject to the conditions outlined in the Planning Director's Agenda Memorandum.
Is there a date on that?
Yes, November 12th.
The November 12th?
Uh huh.
I was just looking up the number. Is that it?
November 12th.
November 12th.
I have a motion on the floor.
I said support.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did.
I, I, I'm not saying you didn't. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Motion and support, is there any further discussion?
No, I'd just like to make the comment that was said earlier about us stopping Menards coming into Heartland Township. I don't think we ever stopped Menards. I don't think that we ever, we still entertain them coming in. The fact was that their site plan did not fit in the location that they were looking for.
Okay. Any other discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you.
Here's a copy of the Agenda Memo and it lists all her conditions.
Okay, we have no pending business this evening. We'll go to the board managers' reports for our second meeting in November, starting with Trustee Germain.
No report.
Trustee Harper is absent. Trustee Petrucci?
No report.
Clerk Chouffu?
No report.
Treasurer Horning?
I'd just like to ask us all to please keep Mrs. Dryden and our, and our finance director's mother in our prayers this week, along with their entire family.
Thank you. Trustee Colaini?
I have no report.
Do I get a second opportunity?
Well, sure.
I thought of something. We had a recent meeting for Winterfest, I'm on the Winterfest Committee for Black and Other Words, I guess, and that planning is prog- And that planning is progressing very well. Pretty much exceeded their financial contributions, at least in terms of people saying they'd send money. They haven't collected it all yet, but they're still in the progress on that. But, and I really think that's a good use of our part. After the meeting, I had further discussions with someone with the school district who's also on the committee. And she wanted to know if the township board would entertain accepting maintenance of the Epley Park. She said that the school district should really not be in the park business, and was wondering if some type of long-term agreement for a dollar or something could be set up where the school district still has the property, but we take on the, the maintenance and so on. She said that the building that's over there, which has been used as a picnic pavilion in the past, it's kind of just concrete walls. She said it's in disrepair, and it's going to be torn down. And so I, I just thought of that, and I thought I'd raise it. It might be something we want to add to our discussion list for the future.
I think that'd be something to add to our list of, yeah.
And then, you know, depending on what we think, further discussions with the school district could begin, or get the right people involved. But I felt it was my responsibility to convey it to the rest of the board.
Is that Epley Park?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Was that, did you have another one?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Just briefly, we did have our birdie day again this week.
Oh, yeah, congratulations.
Apportionment of that proceeds from our dinner went to the teen center.
Oh.
So I just wanted to, to let the board that there, there was a little bit of a benefit from having that event as well. Manager Wickman?
I think, Mr. Supervisor, just maybe a couple highlights. One, you, you see the newsletter that will be going out with December tax bills, and so it's fresh off the press. And only one item to highlight from the operation reports, just a report on the Heartland, or I'm sorry, the Heritage Park parking lot expansion is wrapping up, and very positive reports on, on the quality of that project there. And we're even able to get a couple of amenities out of it with a service drive. So if you haven't had a chance, feel free to take a look at that. And that came in under budget, so always a good thing. Happy to answer. Any other questions?
If there's no other questions, we'll take a brief recess, and we'll go into our discussion this evening of citizen volunteers, education, and involvement.
Do we expect that to be very long?
No.
Well, then, why don't we just go?